Good morning, everyone. I know it looks like I'm here by myself.[8.21][8.21](Laughter). But I have Councilwoman Pastor on the phone. So there's two of us. And now this committee only has three members. So we do have a quorum. First item on the agenda is the minutes of the meeting. Do I have a motion to approve? Are you there?
Yes.
Okay.
I was talking. I had you unmuted.
Oh, I know. The unmuting gets confusing.
I move approval of the minutes of May 24, 2016.
I can't hear her. We can't hear you.
Thelma.
There. Now we can hear you.
Okay. I move approval for May 26, 2016. Approval of the minutes.
I think it's May 24th, but I will second that. All in favor, please say aye.
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 The Vice Mayor has just joined us. We are now to consent action. Item two is the Contract for Community Outreach and Awareness Partner.
Move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Items three and four are for information only. Do you want any further information or discussion on these items? Hearing no comment, we will move on to item five. John? This is the Palm Fronds Diversion. And Gretchen.
The contract that made our city manager nationally famous.[117.89][117.89](Laughter).
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the subcommittee, thank you. We're excited to be here today to talk about a program that is going to be the first as part of our circular economy. So as you know, we're working these public-private partnerships that creates these strategies to build our circular economy by redirecting materials back into the economy instead of taking them to the landfill. So we're going to talk about one public-private partnership that's going to be the first, that's going to be located at our 27th Avenue Transfer Station. And I have Gretchen Wolf here today, who has been managing this process moving forward. Gretchen is with Community and Economic Development Department. And Gretchen and that department has been really helping us move our program forward. So I'll let Gretchen take it from here.
Thank you. So we issued the Palm Fronds Diversion RFP on January 31st with a proposal deadline of June -- excuse me, March 30th. When we were here last fall to talk to you about the possibility of issuing this RFP, at the time, we estimated that our annual palm fronds tonnage was about 6,000 to 8,000 tons. And of course, we've just been putting these in the landfill for years and years, so we've never taken the time to measure them. But after we got feedback from the market that there was an interest in creating economic activity from the palm fronds, we did measure them. And it turns out, we're really looking at 34,000 tons of palm fronds every year.
Slight difference.
Yes. And that's about 3% of the city's annual trash tonnage. So we had an evaluation panel that had subject matter experts, not just from our city, but from the City of Tempe, folks from Arizona State University and the private sector. And they unanimously recommended palm silage as the top proposer. We do have Steve Olds in the audience today from Palm Silage. Palm Silage manufactures livestock feed out of palm fronds. They currently do that in California. And with this contract, they will expand their manufacturing options -- operations into Arizona. So the city currently spends $17 a ton to transport and landfill palm fronds. Under this contract, we will pay Palm Silage to process those palm fronds, no more than $12 a ton. And we're going to return those palm fronds into the -- return them back into our economy rather than sending them to an early death in the landfill. Palm Silage has also offered, on a five-year basis, to review their operational costs. And where they have cost efficiencies, they will share those savings with the city. So as they become more efficient and as they save money, we will save money. As noted on the slide, if we are at 34,000 tons of palm fronds every year, and we're paying $12 a ton to process them instead of $17 a ton to send them to the landfill, that's about $170,000 savings every year. So Palm Silage is going to be the first tenant at the Resource Innovation Campus. The land that they will be leasing is outlined in green. As a reminder, the Resource Innovation Campus is located south of Lower Buckeye Road, which is at the top of the map there, and just west of 27th Avenue in the 27th Avenue Transfer Station, which is on the far right of that map. During Phase One, Palm Silage will lease the green site to the right. And there, they will dry and grind palm fronds while they build a facility. And then, as we move into Phase Two, they will rent the entire grain section. And not only will they dry and grind those palm fronds at our site, they are going to manufacture the livestock here. So the new jobs that are being generated will happen right here in Phoenix at our Resource Innovation Campus. As noted on the slide, the annual rent will be about $7,800 per acre. And we noted it that way because during the phases, the leased site will expand. So other than the fact that it's fun to be here at TNI and show you pictures of livestock, why is this a great idea? The economic benefits include that we're going to see rental revenue between $47,000 and $78,000 a year. We'll see the annual cost savings of about $170,000 a year, 12 new jobs, and then increasing the life cycle of our landfill. And then we're going to close with just a couple of slides with testimonials from their customers.
Pretty hoarse.
Mm-hmm.
From the feed.
That's right. The feed does it all, makes it shiny and...
And one more. Again, this may be the only opportunity we have to show pygmy goats at a TNI Subcommittee meeting.[423.97][423.97](Laughter).
So as Gretchen mentioned, there's additional economic development benefits as well. Not only will it create those 12 jobs, but it also creates some taxable sales that we're looking at for the future, as well as they're going to be spending anywhere from $2 to $6 million in construction for the new facility on our site as well. So we're excited to have some economic development on a site that would have normally not have happened. So that's why we have CED involved in this, as they're helping us get new businesses on-site. And it's working out very well. So with that, with staff request, the Subcommittee recommend council approval of the Palm Fronds Contract with Palm Silage LLC, and recommending it moving forward to council on June 22nd.
Do we have any questions or comments? Motion?
Move approval?
Second.
Motion and a second. I want to congratulate you, Gretchen. I know that you're the Palm Fronds Queen.[488.41][488.41](Laughter). You worked very hard on this.
Thank you.
And smart move, getting Gretchen to do this. I support this. I'm very excited to see something happening down there, and I think this is a great way to do it. So all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pause.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to go to item seven. I've had requests to take it out of order. It's the 2050 Program Management Consultant Contract Award.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Committee members. Here today, we have the presentation for T-2050 Program Management Consultant. And Keeney Knudsen is going to do the presentation on this. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Subcommittee. Here to talk about a recommendation to award a contract to our Program Management Consultant. As you may remember from previous meetings a few months ago, before we went out to procure this contract, we came to the Subcommittee to talk about the need for the consultant contract. And essentially, this contract is to help us to implement the Transportation 2050 with the proposition 104 that was passed by voters last August. What we like to say is that we have varied needs in being able to implement this program. We want to make sure it is successful, and we do everything to be able to support the implementation of the various programs within Transportation 2050. In that, we see this consultant helping us through the process to be able to provide additional city staff or additional staff to help city staff implement their various programs and services within the program, but also to help us where we don't have the expertise in specialized areas such as public-private partnerships, to be one-for-one example, to help us to provide that specialized technical expertise. And then also to help us where we would traditionally go and use consultants or outside services to help us complete projects, whether it's design work or cost estimating, things of that nature. So we're coming here to talk about a recommendation of this, of the consultant who we have selected through this process. The timeframe that we've gone through on this is we released the request for qualifications in March. And then, as you can see up on the screen, it goes through -- we've had a pre-submitting meeting in March, and we ultimately had interviews with the two firms that submitted on this in May. Then we went to the Citizens Transportation Commission with the same item for recommendation of award on May 26. We're here today, obviously, talking about that as well to hopefully garner the Subcommittee's support for this recommendation. And also, and if we're successful in that venture, we'll be talking to the City Council or bringing this to the City Council at a formal meeting on June 22nd. To let you know, we have -- the firms that we selected was AECOM to move forward. And this is a five-year contract, and it is $1 million. We estimate about a maximum of $1 million per year. The one thing we like to say as well is this is an effort that was -- has a lot of attention and a lot of support throughout the industry. So as part of this procurement, we also have a qualified vendor list that we'll be going out and establishing, which will allow additional firms to participate on this contract. In fact, the Program Management Consultant will be able to participate in a maximum of 60% of the work under this contract. The remaining 40% will go to firms on the qualified vendor list.
Is that all within the $1 million?
Yes, that is within the $1 million, Madam Chair. And so our recommendation today is that Transportation Infrastructure Subcommittee recommend approval to the big council of this item for the contract award to AECOM for the Program Management Consultant Contract. Thank you.
We do have one card. Diane Barker.
Good morning, Councilwoman Williams and Subcommittee. My name's Diane Barker, and I was a short-term commissioner, and I do go to those meetings. And I'm delivering to you today what I presented to City Council on June 1st. You got one of your best departments through the Clerk's office, and I got a copy to give to you, Councilwoman Williams. And my effort here, I am an advocate for transit. I know we can have better transit, and we've got a big job to do. You know, if anybody wants to get to know the Valley when they first come here by taking this out of the bus book, they could find out an awful lot, you know? And if they had more customer service, they could learn how to really use the flexible system. We have fixed, which is at grade. It's low capacity. Light rail is considered not high-capacity transit. If you look at the definition, we could use high-capacity transit here. And even ADA, which has typically been freeways, is looking at that. It may be not the model that I'd like, because I'd like to have the best high-speed train. And we could do things like we do in California, where we use the infrastructure on the freeways, where we have the congestion and pollution, and run fast buses. But in doing this, I'm in opposition to this contract. This is a reurge of one we had Steve Beard that got in trouble for writing when he was with our PTA, his own contract, PMC. He is still receiving money with HDR over as of March. I looked at their expenditures. As you know, we -- the city is overseeing now Valley Metro, which we're the biggest member there, for expenditures. And I'm wondering if it's been reported federal government, because you're in the extreme role of being the federal expenditure grant recipient. So I'd like to know that from staff. And also, Mr. Miller called me. He said, "I want to be here today." He's Commissioner. I can't. But in January, he wrote to the mayor, and in February, December of last year, in opposition of being put out of this process of this PMC. And you may be familiar with it, but he goes into detail. And Gail Knight, I saw her when we were listening to the resumes for the police chief, and I said, "You know, we have brought this to some of the decision-makers," as yourself, Thelma Williams. She said, "What did they say?" I haven't heard back. So I went to the clerk, and they said, "Well, they're working on the response." I'm giving this to you, and I'm asking staff to get back. This concerns me, because you know what? Is once you get this $1 million in, I read the contract, the RFP, it's direct. You don't have to have competition. And the last time, when we got Mr. Wolken that sold his company to HDR, now they have a $35 million, and they were supposed to be the competitor on this contract, and I'll finish up, is the fact that they bring in a myriad of contractors that don't have to competitively bid. Why did we have to? 15 years. The first tax ran out. If we don't watch out where we're going, we can end up there. I'm for the people. I'm for the people understanding what's going on. I am for our leaders using transit. I want to know you do. When I see expenditures from our PTA going out, cabs, cabs and rental cars first, and then maybe public transit, it shows that the direction is wrong. They should take advantage of all transit when they go on any trip. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any questions, Vice Mayor?
Yeah, quick question. One of the things that I think is exciting about this contract is we're probably going to be doing more with utilities ahead of time that might help make the projects move more quickly. And that's something, thanks to Chairwoman Williams' leadership, we've been talking a lot about utility conflicts, only digging ones, et cetera. Could you speak a little bit about how we might involve this consultant with the other work we're doing to make sure that when we're digging up the roads, we're being as efficient as possible?
Madam Chair, Vice Mayor Gallego, it's a great question, because that's exactly one of the things we're looking at. Right now, we have an existing pavement maintenance program where we do conflict review with utilities with some of the other departments. But when you add $15 million more to that program, that's a lot more streets, it's a lot more area to cover, to be able to make sure we do those conflict reviews. And so we have existing staff that can handle our existing program, but when you add additional monies there, that puts a lot more pressure on being able to make sure that those conflict reviews are taken up. So that's a small portion where we could utilize this consultant to make sure we're looking at water CIP and what their planning are, what our CIP, what these pavement maintenance programs, where we're going to be maintaining the pavement, and to help us reach out to those utility companies and private development as well, to make sure that where we're doing our maintenance that's funded with Transportation $2050, that we're making sure that we're going to be -- people are going to be in there paving once, and we're not going to be cutting afterwards. That's our intention.
I think it's -- since we have existing efforts, it's really valuable if we can fold in.
Madam Chair and Vice Mayor, I think that the goal is to have a combination of expertise at the PMC, at the Program Management Consultant, but as Keeney mentioned, the qualified vendor list. So when we're looking at general civil engineering, transportation, general things that we can use as a utility company or utilities, search, undergrounding, research, we can use that, and they're going to be readily available to help us move faster on those types of research that we need to do.
Fabulous. And then we will have -- one more. I apologize. I said only one, and I -- as we work with the Valley Metro, they also have project management consultants. So can you just remind us how the two will work together?
Madam Chair, Vice Mayor, that's a great question also, because there is a difference between a Program Management Consultant, when you're talking about, you know, hundreds of millions of dollars a light rail project versus the task force that we're going to be working on here. I mean, we'll have this Program Management Consultant working on things like Bus Rapid Transit, which we don't have here currently in Phoenix, that will help us to figure out how we're going to implement that. But we'll be working in concert with Valley Metro on that side. But the one thing I'll mention is the way that this Program Management Consultant Contract is going to be set up, it's going to be task order-based. So we'll have to have a project. We'll be basically having a project to be able to assign a PMC or members of their QVL, Qualified Vendor List firm, to be able to do work on this contract. So it's not going to be just, "Here's $1 million, go out and spend it." It's what projects do we need them to work on to help us to do specifically? But yes, we will be working with Valley Metro. We're not going to be duplicating efforts with them. They'll have their own consultants working in support of light rail projects, but we'll be working in concert to make sure that all of the work under T-2050 and the work that Valley Metro does is fully coordinated.
Thank you. Councilwoman Pastor, do you have any questions?
I have a question regarding the process. And I just want to understand what the process happened and how were, I guess, part of the process. An RFP hit, and then was there a committee formed? Were there expertise on the committee? And in this committee, were the -- those that were part of this committee, were they also part of writing the RFP and the selection? So...
Madam Chair, Councilwoman Pastor, as far as the process goes, we follow Title 34, that state statutes, in the procurement process. As part of that, we are to set a qualified selection panel. As part of that effort, we -- that selection panel typically is made up of city staff, but it's usually we put a diverse city staff panel together. At the request of the Citizens Transportation Commission, we extended the opportunity for members of the Citizens Transportation Commission to sit on that panel. Unfortunately, during the process, we had two volunteers to sit on that. One was not able to because of scheduling conflicts. The other one was only able to participate halfway through and between scheduling conflicts, had to pull out of the panel, unfortunately. But -- so we weren't able to count that person's involvement through the process. But we did have a varied panel of different city employees who represent different departments and areas. I believe we had members from both the Street Transportation Department, the Public Transit Department, as well as Community and Economic Development Department as well. As far as who wrote the RFP, that is done through our procurement section, which they do not sit on the evaluation panel. So if that helps, that answers your question.
Okay. Thank you.
You know, I always have the question put to me is, "Why do you hire these people? Why can't city staff do this?" And it took me a long time to figure it out, that you have limited staff. They are very busy. It is economically better for the city to hire consultants specific to certain jobs than to hire all these specialists and try to keep them on staff on an annual basis. It gets very expensive. So I fully understand why you went out for this. I do want to say that I'm very supportive of what the Vice Mayor said about coordination, whether it's street cuts, new projects, rail lines, whatever, that you coordinate internally as well as with Valley Metro. All that you have planned to do, and actually, although it seems like 2050 is forever, a lot of this is going to be happening fairly soon. I know it takes a lot of planning and coordination to make this happen. But the last thing I want to hear is to have someone come here in a year and say, "Well, you've done it twice. You tore it up three times." And I'm sure you would hear a lot about that. I know I'm pretty confident, you're shaking your heads yes, that you are really going to coordinate like we've never done it before. So I am very supportive of this moving forward. So I would like a motion.
Move approval?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. Go forth. And item eight is the Maricopa County Department of Transportation 2035. Sorry to surprise you.
Yeah, no, no. That's fine. So thank you very much for this opportunity, for this presentation. We do have Denise Lacy, the Maricopa County Department of Transportation Planning Branch Manager, to discuss this item for us. And we've been working with the county DOT for the last year or so, and here is Denise to present this item.
You're welcome.
Well, I'm sorry. I'm not good at the electronic stuff, so...[1471.11][1471.11](Laughter). I got it, thanks. Thank you very much for allowing me to come and speak to you about this effort that we've been taking for the last 18 months. This has been my baby, and I've been having a great time. It's long overdue. So as you likely understand, the purpose for a long-range transportation study or plan for the entire Maricopa County area, specifically focusing on county-owned, operated, and maintained roadways, is to ensure that we can meet the needs of our residents as we're moving into the future. Because if we're not planning ahead, we're not planning, because that's the purpose of planning, correct? So we want to make sure that we are doing a good job of that. One of the things that we also have to do is we need to look at existing plans, whether it's a Maricopa County Plan, a City of Phoenix Plan, or other jurisdictional agencies. And we needed to update goals and policies, and the goals up here on the screen are not untypical to those goals that you would see throughout the region. So, you know, we want good quality of life and economic vitality, which you just made a motion in regards to that two agenda items ago. Good for you. I'm so excited. That's right over by my office. We all want to see our travelers be safe as we're moving through the future here. We want to ensure that our investments, you just talked about that, that we're preserving our system as much as we can, limiting those amount of times we have to tear up our roadways. We want to provide a network that our travelers are not worried about, whether on City of Phoenix, Maricopa County roadways, or City of Surprise roadways. They just want to be on a roadway that works and will get them from point A to point B in a decent amount of time. So that's part of the purpose of our overall planning. We have done a lot of work on this, as some of your staff members can tell you. And I would like to say thank you for allowing your staff to be part of our process. We uphold multiple stakeholder workshops throughout this process that have been well, well-attended, up to 50 and 60 members at some point in time, all gathered around tables, looking at maps, so that we can all actually work together as one force and not as individual units. So it's been super, super great. We've also undertaken an extensive public outreach program, open houses. We've done internet. We did an interactive map that was just a blast. I will say that. It was very, very fun, even for an old person like me. So here's some of the breakdown that we got on our interactive map. So what you can see based upon this input is connectivity rose to the top very quickly, not unusual in unincorporated Maricopa County, probably a little more interesting to me in our incorporated jurisdictional agencies. Because in unincorporated Maricopa County, we have a lot of roadways that people have to go north to go south, east to go west, because we just have a ton of gaps. So some of that connectivity also played into the bike and pedestrian needs, because we have a lot of sidewalks that are missing, and so they didn't feel that it's connected. So very exciting to see that connectivity rose to the top, because that's dear and dear to my heart. And closely following that is our bike ped safety and a multitude of other comments. If you ever want to see them, I'm happy to provide them to you. There's like 2,000 comments. Have a blast. It was great.[1689.86][1689.86](Laughter).
We'll take your recap.[1691.86][1691.86](Laughter).
I thought you might. So one of the things that I wanted to show you here is we divided this report into three general areas. General Area One would be the areas that we got comments that are west of I-17 and north of I-10. So a lot of our northwest Valley area. General Area Two was I-17, if you were to take the alignment straight down and take that -- now I'm confused as to where my General Area Two was.
Nineteenth Avenue.
Yeah, so basically 99th Avenue straight down or so, maybe. Yeah, 19th Avenue, 19th Avenue straight down and south of I-10. So all the way out to Hila Bend, Buckeye, Goodyear, all of that. And General Area Three was everything east of I-17 or 19th Avenue in that area. So part of the reason it was broke down that way is because, as you likely know, unincorporated Maricopa County is a lot in the unincorporated areas in the West Valley. We have very little, actually, in the east. But not unlike what we saw before, we had connectivity rise to the top very quickly in General Area Two. And in many of the other areas, that was a high score. And then we had connectivity maintenance issues. Of course, people talked a little bit about dirt roads and traffic concerns, a lot of missing signs and that kind of thing, but typical comments that we would hear, but still really, really great information. And the thing that was really great about this was that we have specific areas that were identified on our interactive map specifically. were identified on our interactive map specifically. So what we had to do was, this information is bring it all into reality. Because data is data, but how do we make that work for us? And Maricopa County has a project rating system that works very, very well. And it looks at traffic congestion, safety, the cost-benefit analysis, land use, and regional travel, to help us prioritize projects so we know which ones should rise to the top. And that was developed in assistance with our Transportation Advisory Board. So it's been a really successful thing. So this is the map that's identified where our capacity needs are throughout Maricopa County, based upon the Maricopa Association of Governments model. So you see all these wonderful little dots and some lines. And we did these at three horizon periods, FY '16 through '20, '21 through '25, and '26 and beyond. These are projects that actually met a minimum scoring requirement from the project rating system. So these are projects that we wanted to look at to see if we want to continue to study them a little bit further, or if we want to continue to monitor them based upon the fact that we know there may be development that's going to happen in close proximity to those roadways. Or they could be in somebody else's capital improvement program, or our transportation improvement program. Or we're not quite sure why the model is saying that that's going to be overcapacitated, because it's vacant farmland, and we don't know if anything's going to happen in the next 10 years. Because that a lot depends upon our economy. So how does that relate to what the City of Phoenix is looking at? This is the area where City of Phoenix roadways showed up. And as you can see, this is focused a lot in the Levine area. And we do have some that are roadways that we would like to look at, and we are looking at right now from a staff level, a little bit closer, to see if there's an immediate need to move forward. And when I say that, my staff is actually looking at all the elements that feed into that roadway and what the overcapacitation would be. One of the things I can tell you is some of the model shows that the South Mountain and 202 are all coming into this area in the next five years. Is that actually going to happen? We're not sure. So what we would suggest on some of those is we'll continue to monitor it and see if we come to an area where we need to do an improvement. So this is, you know, really cool information to be able to look at, but it has to be refined. And again, that's what my staff is doing right now. And I have details that I will work with your staff, and our recommendations will get gleaned out. In the next couple of weeks, actually, we will have some firm recommendations that will be provided to your staff as to those roads that we're operating on. So one of the things that we'll do from there is we'll come to a partnership approach for those and say, hey, we see that something needs to happen. What can we do to work together? So where do we go from here? This is a lot of data. This is a lot of information. So from here, we need to finalize things. And that's what we're doing right now. We are completing our public outreach round two. This does say that it was going to end in April. However, we extended that for two months, because we felt that we needed to do a little bit more outreach, which is really, really great. And we are, right now, finalizing our project recommendations and hope to have those finalized no later than the end of the month, and to our leadership team at McDOT for their approval, and to our Transportation Advisory Board. The draft transportation plan, we anticipate that will be available electronically in July of this year. Yay! We will then spur the public outreach round two, which will be basically the entire transportation system plan online for folks to be able to review at their leisure and provide comments. And then I anticipate taking this full document to the Board of Supervisors for adoption in December. And where do we go from there? Well, I get about a six-month break, and we get to start the whole process all over again. But it's a great process. This is what we do as transportation planners. We are always looking. If you have any questions on any of the specific projects, I'm happy to answer them. Any questions on our process or anything, just let me know.
Madam Chair, thank you, Denise. Madam Chair, this is for information and discussion. There's no action for this one.
Vice Mayor.
Fabulous. Thank you so much for joining us. I represent the southern part of the Levine area, so this is of enormous interest to folks in my community. And they're going to, I think, some of the upcoming projects, they'll welcome as good news. Could you, so our other, our next agenda item is on flood control. And many of these projects in this area are in areas that flood heavily. Will you talk to me about how you work with Maricopa County Flood Control? And as you're doing these projects, what we might, do you coordinate on drainage? And I know curb and gutter aren't always part of the projects, but could you sort of talk to me about that?
Sure. Vice Mayor, thank you for that question. I appreciate that. Councilwoman Williams and I believe Laura's on the phone as well, right?
That's impressive.
So if we are working on a project, whether it's the Flood Control District of Maricopa County or Maricopa County Department of Transportation, we are constantly working together. And we have to. Because as you said, roadways do impact drainage. Drainage impacts roadways. So we are constantly working together. So they are actually part of our stakeholder team as well, the Flood Control District. They are also invited to every one of our projects that we're working on in Maricopa County. One of the things that we have noticed over the last few years is what we're getting is a lot of roadways that are having breakdown due to some of the drainage issues, which I believe is kind of what you're getting at a little bit. So we're really trying harder on our partnership there to ensure that we're doing a better job in regards to that. What can we do? Some of that happens because development comes and the drainage gets pushed into a different direction than it was initially anticipated. So there are a lot of things that we're working on with that. So the direct answer is yes, we are always in partnership with the Flood Control District. Those improvements for those roadways, when we're looking at those, I've actually just been tasked with another one of those, which is looking at high-maintenance roads, which is some of that related to the drainage, and we're coming up with a methodology for that. So we work hand-in-hand with the Flood Control District. If we have a project that's in Phoenix, we work hand-in-hand with Phoenix. So it's looking at the big picture. And the Flood Control District invites us in on their main drainage studies as well. So we're always together.
And so if, is curb and gutter standard? Does that come out of their budget? How does that work?
Well, thank you for that question. So curb and gutter is not always standard on a rural cross-section of a roadway. It is, curb and gutter is always a standard on an urban cross-section of a roadway. So there's one thing that we're still trying to work with our engineers. It's much better. We have a great communication on our engineers there. It's not just, well, we just need to put two lanes in. Now it's okay, what do we need overall? But there are other protection factors that we can use besides just curb and gutter. We can ensure that we have better shoulders that are put in place. We can change some of our materials. We can make sure that the drainage is not always overtopping every time we get a half an inch of rain, you know? So there are other methodologies that we can look at as well. So is curb and gutter always included? No.
And in the Levine area, so within County Islands, within Phoenix's largest border, how do we know what is rural and what is urban?
That is what we are in planning, actually, working with engineers right now. And we are trying to do is bring conformity. So in other words, if the City of Phoenix has, Broadway, shall I say Broadway? If the City of, yeah, if the City of Phoenix has Broadway or baseline listed as an urban arterial roadway, then if we're filling in a one-mile gap or a two-mile gap, we're going to probably look at that as an urban roadway as well. Whereas curb, gutter, sidewalk, bicycle lanes would be put in in that area. That has not always been our standard over the last 10 or 15 years, but it is something that has been changing to that methodology. So they're coming to us now in planning, and we are starting to make that determination as to which cross-section should go in that location. So hopefully, you'll start to see those improvements are happening as we put in new roadway segments.
And Madam Chair, just to add, we've had a great partnership with McDOT, with Maricopa Department of Transportation. We actually have one project talking about cross-sections on MC-85. They call it MC-85. We call it Buckeye Road. We're actually working with McDOT for them to design the roadway as a City of Phoenix standard with curb and gutter, sidewalk, and streetlights at our standard, but they're building it, they're designing it. And so we have a great relationship. We're trying to find other ways to see how we can partnership with McDOT for other types of projects where we're sort of in the county area, it's a City of Phoenix. How do we work together to build those projects?
And we're doing exactly the same on 35th Avenue.
35th Avenue, yes.
So that's really great. And that, that result leads into that seamless regional connectivity that is a goal from our standpoint.
So 35th Avenue, as you mentioned, is southern to baseline. And we had a partnership where we're getting some funding through your special projects. I believe it's a special projects program that you have, where they provided funding. And our commitment was that we were going to do the project and then also annex the area that's in the county.
Fabulous. Yes. Most of the county and city residents love it when we can work together. At our Levine budget meeting, we often hear a lot of comments about roads that are transitioned between City of Phoenix and County Islands, and that sometimes they're, you can tell where the transition happens. How are we doing at getting you that information? It occurred to me that that is information that would be very valuable for this plan.
Thank you, because that leads into one of our next steps. Actually, the TSP identifies a lot of other steps that we need to take from a planning standpoint. And one of the very next things that we will be kicking off later this year will be a full-blown gaps analysis that will show us where we have inconsistencies or gaps throughout the area. We did a scalloped street study, I would say, eight, 10 years ago, probably. I think it was before I was here.
It's been a while.
That identified some of those situations that you're talking about. We'll be utilizing that in our gaps analysis as well. So it's a matter of, again, some of our planning has been a little behind where we would like to be at this point in time, but we're bringing it back to the future. So that's really great for us. So we'll continue to work on those improvements. And your staff is actually pretty good about letting us know when something has been identified. And I think that's a very good key for us, is communication and good relationships with the staffs of our jurisdictions. We have regular meetings, I believe quarterly meetings, with the City of Phoenix, as well as other jurisdictional agencies, to where that information can be brought to us so that we can quickly react to that, rather than just sit on it for a while, because we don't want to do that. We want to be responsive.
And just to add also, it crosses all the other departments with planning development. We have active discussions with planning development and your leadership at McDOT. So we're trying to make sure that as development is progressing, they're in the county, and how are they going to be incorporated into the city? How are we working those, the cross-sections of the roadways, the drainage, all of those things? And so we're working very well to try to make sure that we're not double taxing anybody, we're not double imposing, you know, impacts to, undue impacts to the development community as well. So we're working very closely on that with the other departments within the City of Phoenix.
Fabulous. And we have gotten great feedback. For example, we did stop signs in an intersection that's partially within the county and partially within the city. And it was more complicated, but we got it done.
It was 59th Avenue, just south of Betty Fairfax High School. So we work in partnership. Half of the intersection was city, half of the intersection was the county. And so we work together to get that done, so.
And I think we're working now, we have a neighborhood that wants to clean up, adopt a street. And they're on the border of City of Phoenix and County. And so it was much more complicated to adopt a street on the border.
Yes, it can be. And we're trying to make those a much cleaner process for all of us. And I think we are getting there. I just think it takes a little time. And we all want to serve our customers. One of the next things that we're doing as well is an active transportation plan, which is going to identify and address bike, pedestrian, and transit accommodations throughout Maricopa County, focused on county roadways as well, which will lead back into some of this other information that we're talking about, too.
Fabulous.
Councilwoman Pastor, do you have any questions?
No, I don't.
Thank you. I believe this is just for discussion.
For discussion, yes.
I want to thank you for coming.
Thank you.
And congratulate you on cooperation between the two departments. I think it's a great example of what we keep chirping about over on this side, is that we want to make sure everybody's working together. Especially, I know your district has many of those complex little problems. And I know, I have several that's going to be on the horizon very soon, from Anthem South on the west side of the freeway. So I'm glad they're practicing with you, because they'll have it polished by the time it's to go north. Again, thank you. And you're welcome to come back anytime and give us an update and tell us about any projects you're working on. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a great day.
You, too.
Thank you.
I think this is your show.
Yeah. So the next exciting item is our floodplain management plan. Just to just mention, over 16 years ago, I was the floodplain manager. And it's exciting how we're addressing the needs of the residents and how we're costs reductions on our residents, because this is, this plan is a very important plan for the community, and how we're not only addressing the flood hazards of the community, but also how are we addressing the, just the economic vitality of the community. And so just to, just to mention, and Eileen Yasi is going to go into this, but I mean, this, this plan is basically establishing what we've done in the past, what we've done, what we're going to do in the future, and how do we work collectively in partnership with all these different agencies across the, across the region. So here with me is Eileen Yasi. She's going to present this item.
Sure. Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the TNI Subcommittee. First, I want to thank my teammates, Hassan Mishak and his, and our floodplain management team at the City of Phoenix and the Street Transportation Department. This really has been their, their effort. I just happen to be up here speaking, so I really want to recognize our teammates' work. And as well as, this was in partnership, too, with money from the federal government to kick off this plan we received in 2015. So this is nearing the completion. This is on the agenda for action today. The last time we actually did a full-blown update was 1992. Some people may be wondering, wow, that seems so long ago. But it is, and it's not, because we've always been continuously, we've always been continuously implementing those projects and implementing and monitoring the plan. And it came to, kind of again, a couple of years ago, saying, you know what? We should probably do a full, a full update, because we really went through and did our plan and completed a lot of our projects. So we really needed to kind of set the course, as Ray mentioned, for the future. So not only was it time for do, for us to do it, we are also meeting a couple of federal regulations. One, dealing with the flood insurance program, which we'll talk a lot, I'll talk a lot about today, about the benefits to our residents and to our community. And then also, we'll get into kind of the class rating system, the CRS, and the 1 through 10 rating there, and we're number six, we're a six, class six designation. And again, just kind of going over what this plan does when it comes to the four umbrellas about communication, projects, and setting the course for our future. So the community rating system class, it's a flood insurance administration class rating. This chart, it shows the nine different CRS classes and the discount per community for each of them. So the, so nine is the, is the least amount of points you could get. Oh, actually, there's 10, so you don't get actually any benefit from the insurance policy discount. And the higher you go, the lower number, the higher the discount. So if you are, if you are, if you are ranked in the number one category, you actually receive the largest discount for flood insurance in your community. So the City of Phoenix, we're class six, and we have about just over 5,000 flood insurance policies with our, with our discount, again, of close to $700,000. And where we have been over the years, and again, so this, a city throughout the country, this is required, they receive a rating by the, by the, this rating system by implementing a variety of activities under four main umbrellas. One, public involvement and communication. There's a variety of different activities that you are scored on. The second part is mapping and regulations. We have hundreds of studies that we've done throughout the city with partnership with Maricopa County Flood Control and other partnerships with the federal government, on really figuring out where we are prone and how, and the studies of what, how we are addressing them. The third umbrella, again, of what they rate us on is flood damage reduction activity. And the fourth one is the warning and response. So over the years, you can see, we've been, we've been moving the needle forward, and we're right now continuing at our class rating six.
Okay, can I ask a quick question on that?
Yeah, sure.
I am looking at this, and in 1991, we had all kinds of floods everywhere. We put in the storm sewers. So I take it, the more work you do to reduce it, the better premium discount you get. Is that correct?
Madam Chair.
All right.
Yes, Madam Chair. And just to add, I mean, as Eileen mentioned, we are monitoring this every year. We actually have to have certification by the city manager every year. And so we do that, as well as audits. Every three to five years, FEMA comes in and they check all our books and what we're monitoring. So we're very active in what we're doing. But as well, as more, as we can do more with infrastructure, you know, exactly what you mentioned, we can reduce this ultimately.
Okay, thank you.
So another benefit that a lot of, a lot of people may or may not know is, this has a direct benefit to people in the floodplain area and those high, high-risk areas. They receive a 20% reduction. But actually, it benefits the people not in a floodplain. They actually receive a 10% reduction as well. The plan, as well as kind of what I mentioned under those four umbrellas, it does, it does prioritize, as kind of Ray mentioned, the way that we do floodplain management activities. And it also identifies projects to reduce our flooding risks for future activities. So how did we get this news out to the public that we were updating this? Starting, once we got the final draft complete in January, that's when we Starting, once we got the final draft complete in January, that's when we kind of kicked off our public involvement activities. We released the plan, we put it on our website, we put together a two-sided fact sheet, so it would be kind of easy for anyone to pick up and understand, to show benefits of why we're doing this. And then we went through a comment at review period as well. We reached out to village planning committees. We did have four kind of standalone public meetings as well, and we met with Flood Control Maricopa County District and the Arizona Department of Water Resources and our other partners. And then, based on that, we received about 30 comments. Some were technical, some were more general questions about, is there, is there a project happening in my, my community that is in the, is in the plan or not in the plan? So we did work through those, and from then, we developed the final draft, and now we're here presenting it today. And we're hoping that it's up to the TNI Committee today to recommend this plan to move forward for city council adoption in the next couple of weeks. So that concludes my presentation. We'll be happy to answer any questions.
Do you have any questions?
Thank you for your work on this and for spending lots of time in all of our communities, mine included. I think we still have a lot of interest in this. It was interesting to learn about the scoring system.
Yeah.
It seems like they give almost everyone pretty lousy grades.
Well, and Madam Chair and Vice Mayor, and to keep in mind, that scoring rating methodology is increasing. So we have to keep on making sure that we have those numbers up there, because the requirements are getting higher and higher every year, so.
It looks like we got 16% of eligible points.
Correct.
And in particular, I was looking at some of the flood damage reduction activities where we did, we did not, we have a lot of opportunity for growth. Was there anything that you saw that you think particularly we, as policymakers, ought to pay attention to?
I think, Madam Chair and Vice Mayor Gallego, I think that, you know, we recognize that, that we do have, we do have areas in, the one that you brought up, the flood damage reduction activity, that we have zero points on, that we have, that we did not even come close to it. And I think the area, one of the big ones, is, you know, a basic comment, I think you'll hear, everyone's heard from over the years, is staff time and money. Is, right now, our floodplain management team, we have a staff of four. We are also part, you know, connected with development review as well, besides doing all of our local drainage requests as well. So anytime that someone has a flood on their street or things like that, we have mainly one to two staff people that handle all of those. Right now, our database is about 700 complaints. They're part of our investigation. We handle all the studies as well. We're also the ones kicking off the capital improvements. So I think from a staffing perspective, if we wanted to do more, I think that that's where it falls in line, is that we would need more with that. Specifically, I think that we've also, in general, between the three, the four umbrellas that I mentioned, as identified, we've looked to possible improvements would be developing a community planning committee. Again, though, it goes back with staffing and time and capacity to do that. And then as well as, can we do more? I think that goes back with reporting for floodplain, for flood-prone areas, and then as well as kind of further enhancing our scheduled public information activities. I know this month is Monsoon Awareness Month. We are out there in the community. I know RPIO was on Fox 10 this morning, talking about some new, you know, I don't want to, they're alternative sandbags, that are actually pretty neat. But I think that goes back with, again, so these are areas that we can improve. And then the area that we do see, and this goes back kind of with the, with the flood damage reduction activities, is we do think that developing a post-disaster event mitigation policy can also further us, and we can add more points to it. But I think it goes back with staff resources. It comes down to the heart of it.
Fabulous. And there was some good news in here. It was neat to see how many points we got for like the Sonoran Desert Preserve, instead of a more natural alternative. So that was great. Another reason why that is a success for our community. There was one section that talked about natural disasters, and it said that we had had three in the community. And so I had a rough rookie year at the City Council, where we got the presidential disaster declaration for the flood, but I learned there are like six tiers of disaster declarations. And so it looks like 2014 did not count for this purpose, and I'm just trying to understand. It felt like it was a flood-related disaster, so what do they look for?
Madam Chair and Vice Mayor, good, a great comment, and, you know, a question with regards, we do work with the federal government to make sure how they're classifying these. As I mentioned, a lot of the requirements are increasing, and so it could have been that we didn't meet the requirement as a federal disaster point, even though it was a state situation, a state disaster. So I think it's, it's that, what happened, that timeframe, and then what's happened in the past. I do know that we had, we've had some disasters before with flooding across the whole city, when we didn't have bridges over the Salt River, and, you know, infrastructure in place. And that's why we had a very robust program, you know, from the 80s and 90s and 2000s, where we-
Back when I was storm drain queen.
Yeah. So it goes back to that leadership that you all had, and what we've gotten up to this point, where it, we had a lot of bond programs. And I would say, you know, we had extensive bond programs where it helped us develop all these different, you know, requirement, or different infrastructure, as well as the development community, working with the development community, and how they're developing their, you know, their residential development and commercial development. So all of those things in the last 30, 40 years that helped us to get to this point, but we need to continue on. How do we continue on with that?
Fabulous, thank you.
As part of the impact fees, does that include storm drains?
There's some level, Madam Chair, this, there are some levels of impact fees, but they're in certain areas, in the impact fee, infrastructure area. So the Northeast Valley, the Southwest Valley, Levine, and as well as the Northwest Valley as well, in those areas. And we are being more active in how we're looking at those impact fees, as well as the land, because a lot of the land in the north, in the north, is owned by state land. And so we're looking at how are we working towards a collective partnership with state agencies, with the county, and with the development community, and how can we work together to minimize flood hazards, increase the development opportunities to have better development out there? Ultimately, we don't want to have flood risks out there. I mean, that's, you know, where we have people living there, or potential, potentially people living there. So how are we working together? And so we're working every day to try to make sure that we create an opportunity for those areas to be developed in a safer way.
There are some big volume washes up there.
Yes, especially in the Northeast area. We have alluvial fans that are very complicated, that actually, I mean, water does not have any boundaries, so they come from other communities that come into the City of Phoenix. So we're challenged with a lot of complicated drainage, especially north of the CAP. A lot of drainage is very, very complicated.
That was going to be my next question, because I remember 25 years ago, when we started putting in the storm drains, and first challenge was, what do they connect to? And we had to put that in first, because there wasn't the flow. And secondly, roads, major streets had been built in an inverted V to carry water. And then when you did the street improvements, when they got populated, you leveled it out, and then it all ran into the neighbors. So what do you do to prevent that from happening? Because I-
No, it's a great question. And just to, just to kind of give you a geographical representation of the area. So if you think of north of the CAP of City of Phoenix, predominantly, we're following the topography of all the, the topography of that area. And where there's washes, the roadways basically drain into those washes. And we try to keep as much the elevation close to that topography. When you go south of the CAP, basically down to the Salt River, for the most part, a lot of the north-south corridors, 7th Street, 7th Avenue, all these major corridors have a lot of the trunk line. So they start maybe small up north, but they start getting bigger and bigger and bigger as they come down south to the Salt River. And then south of the Salt River to the mountain, you have drainage coming towards the north to the Salt River. So, and that's a little bit less, there's less infrastructure, you know, as we're trying to develop more infrastructure through that area. And so that's how we're sort of laid out across the whole city with the drainage. So we try to make sure that we're not building roads higher than, than the elevation of the finished pads, the finished floor pads of housing.
And you work close with planning to make sure that doesn't happen?
Yes. And for the most part, a lot of the, a lot of the development, a lot of the roads have been developed by the development community. So working with them to make sure that they're not building houses below the elevation of the roadway. So that's, it's very important.
Yeah, that's one of, that's a good example of actually one of our cross-checks of our two departments with, working with P and D hand in hand. Anytime that there's new development coming, it comes into the floodplain management team for their review, to make sure, again, are they building a house in the floodplain or near it, and is it going to be above or below it? And there's, we have strict requirements of how high it does have to be, related to near or in it. One thing I wanted to add, related to kind of connecting the system underground and things like that, particularly in the built environment that we have, not necessarily in the outskirts, is so that's when we actually get, we use our, we use our investigation team, again, do we have continuous complaints in certain areas? And then we launch studies for that area. Do we need to, is there a pipe in there? And is it the right size? Or should we, should we modify the way that the intake is coming in? And should we connect it differently? So that's when we go out and we do kind of our localized, small project, small project assistance kind of, when we go, when we put in new drain pipes that could be larger, or we change out the intakes. And again, are we going to connect them to a larger basin or not, and things like that? So that's when we do things on an annual basis to address, again, the current built environment, and how are we addressing flooding, flooding-prone areas, about kind of, again, maximizing and connecting into the right place.
And do you work with ADOT? Because one of the problems we faced was the intersections off of ADOT's, you know, the major off-ramps, the freeway ramps, were actually designed to throw the water out onto our streets.
Madam Chair, yes. I mean, they, we do work with ADOT with regard to that. And ultimately, they cannot change, they can alter the water direction, but they have to make it, whatever's coming in has to go out the same. And so we work with them, like along the Loop 101, a lot of the drainage that comes off the Northeast Valley, it's coming across the 101, they have to make sure that they're draining the same, whatever water was coming through that area has to drain away from that. And so we do work with them. They do have different standards with regards to how they build freeways in the valley, and nationally as well. And we do have some challenges with them, where they're using different standards as what they're required to build, and then what we're required to plan and design and build as well, with regards to how we affect floodplains, things like that. And so we're constantly looking at that, and how they're doing their designs, and how they're affecting our watersheds, our washes, things like that.
And is the county included in that? Because there's still development going on in the county, which are really islands surrounded by the cities.
Yes, Madam Chair. The Maricopa County Flood Control District has gone through and has done all these studies, and a lot of the studies across the whole Maricopa County, and they've identified, you know, the watershed areas, the type of improvements that need to be looked at. And so they've gone through and done that. And as was mentioned before, the Maricopa Department of Transportation is working with them as well, to make sure we're not causing, or they're not causing problems across the region, or in the county, across the whole county.
I know this is a continuing challenge that we will have for many, many years.
Yeah.
But I'm glad to hear that we are moving forward and working well with others. So I believe this is an action item.
Move approval of the plan.
And I will second it, since we're the only two left. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, she carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think that takes us to call for the public, and we have two cards. Jim, you or your mom? Ladies first. Cynthia Malecki.
Thank you, Chairwoman Williams. Thank you, committee members. I have to hurry up, because I have two minutes. 4,000 Kelvin LED lights, LED lights do not increase safety. They produce glare, which decreases visibility, thus decreases safety. So I gave you some photographs of some of us who went to Mountain View Park. The first one, now, these are different than the ones that the city put on the survey, because these are when the camera is in the light. We're not looking at the light, we're in the light. So the one with the yellow grass, that's the 3,000 Kelvin. And you can see colors. The one where you really can't see us is the 4,000. Remember, pedestrians and drivers are in the light, not around the light. Then you have two pictures of two of us, except the first one, I'm in the shadow. I am there, but you can't see me because of the glare of the white light. I stepped two feet to the left, and there I am. So at the Mayor's Neighborhood Advisory Committee, Mr. Hartman said that 4,000 LED lights have the same wavelength as moonlight. So I gave you two charts. That's wrong. The charts demonstrate that the 4,000 LED has a sharp blue spike. That's what makes them bad. If you want to go to the next chart, if you want to compare LED to moonlight, it's 2,200 Kelvin. I don't make this up. I don't know where he gets his information. Mr. Hartman said that 4,000 LED lights would be appropriate for, there we go, would be appropriate for major roadways. Our city is a grid. My back is on 35th Avenue. Is 35th a major artery? Yes, it is. I would have that in my light, in my bedroom. At that meeting, a constituent in the FQ story area, Jennifer Longden, asked him to speak to ADOT, because she's got the lights in back of her house, and she can't sleep at night because of the glare. Her back porch is as light as a surgical suite. So I also included some articles from other cities who have the 4,000 lights. I would really enjoy some feedback about Las Vegas, because I get told about Las Vegas a lot. The mayor's upset less than two years because she almost hit somebody, a pedestrian, because of the glare. Okay. And there's a whole list.
Need you to wrap up.
Yes, yes, yes. So why aren't we having open dialogue about this issue, about all the factors? What research is the staff doing? As a taxpayer, I'm paying for this. I really feel, I would like to know. Where is the research coming from? The other question I have, is there are 1,500 white lights now in the city? Who gave them authority? Has there been studies? 1,500 already planted. I want an answer.
And we can have staff do a report and get you your answers.
I'm sorry, what?
We will have staff give you answers.
Very good. I have my email and my phone number. Thank you.
Jim?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman, Councilwoman Gallego. I guess one of the things that I should have realized is she's a tough act to follow, so maybe I should have gone first. I just, real quick, I just wanted to say something that, I understand that one of the issues that staff has raised regarding the white LED 4,000 Kelvin versus the 3,000 Kelvin is an efficiency savings, that essentially, by turning on the bright white lights, they're more efficient, so you have to, so you get to spend money, spend less money. That used to be true 10, 12 years ago. GE says that the difference is one and a half to maybe 6% difference in efficiency. It is not the 20 to 30% difference that we've been hearing some city staff proclaim at some advisory meetings. So I just really wanted to sum up by saying, with what my mother said, with that issue, I know from personal experience that a number of council members run on various items. One of them is certainly public safety. I think my mom showed that visibility has decreased, which inhibits public safety. Another one is stewards of our tax dollars. The efficiency rating is no longer pertinent, because the technology has changed. And the other one is transparency. And one of the issues about transparency isn't just holding open meetings, it's also about purveying accurate information. So if we in the community are to have a good dialogue about how we expend, a lot of, how we invest, I want to say, a lot of tax dollars in terms of 3,000 Kelvin versus 4,000 Kelvin, let's at least speak to accurate information, as opposed to having two different sets of information. Earlier this meeting, Councilwoman Williams, you said that it's a good idea to practice at- Williams, you said that it's a good idea to practice, at times, contracting out to the experts in the community, right? City staff should not be expected to be the end-all, be-all of everything. They got a lot on their plate. The experts are saying, for public safety, for efficiency purposes, yellow LED 3,000 Kelvin are appropriate.
Thank you. Actually, we haven't had a report on what's going on with LED. Could we have that, I think our next meeting won't be until September, but could you have staff do a presentation and, and bring us some of the answers to their questions?
Absolutely, Madam Chairman. We will come back in September with a report.
Because this is very interesting material.
It is.
So, I'd like to have some response to that. Is there anything that you would like to see in a future agenda item, knowing that that's probably September for our next meeting?
We have a list of what we're expecting.
I think it's in a, there we go.
Fabulous. It looks like we already have a full list, so I am looking forward to September.
Well, if something comes up over the summer, let me know, and we can adjust the schedule. So, hearing further items, we're adjourned. Thank you all for participating.